I call to order this regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission Monday, May 22, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
For the reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Anishinaabe whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize the three bands of Ojibwe, Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over 200 years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands are an expression of gratitude and appreciation for those ancestors who have come before us. We give thanks to the generous care with which the Anishinaabe and those members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land and our community. Clerk Baut, please take the role.
Commissioner Asman is absent.
I'm here.
Oh, sorry about that. He's present.
Surprise.
He's surprised you didn't know that.
Surprise, surprise. He made it.
Commissioner Bush?
Here.
Commissioner Chapman?
Here.
Commissioner Ake?
Here.
Commissioner Wingard?
Here.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
Here.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Since we have a quorum, we will continue with the meeting. Right now, we are going to begin with proclamations and presentations. We have the introduction and swearing in of the new police officer for Mount Pleasant, Cameron Smith.
Greetings, Commissioners. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing our newest police recruit, Cameron Smith. Cameron, if you want to come join me up here, thank you. 2023 graduate of Ferris State University's Law Enforcement Academy. Cameron also earned his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Ferris as well. He recently served as an intern for the Macosta County Sheriff's Department. Prior to that, Cameron worked for the city of Ithaca's Department of Public Works and the Gratchit County Road Commission. Very diverse. In his spare time, Cam volunteered on the security detail for the Ferris State football games, where he conducted bag searches and helped with crowd control. He also served his community as a Little League umpire. These valuable turf and field experiences will definitely serve Cameron well in his law enforcement career. We at the Division of Public Safety are happy you have joined us, Cameron, and we look forward to many years of dedicated service. Okay? If you could turn and face me and raise your right hand and repeat after me, I, Cameron, do solemnly swear
I, Cameron, do solemnly swear
that I will support, defend, and uphold
That I will support, defend, and uphold
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
the laws of the state of Michigan
The laws of the state of Michigan
and the ordinances of the city of Mount Pleasant
And the ordinances of the city of Mount Pleasant
to the best of my abilities
To the best of my abilities
Congratulations, Cameron. You're a sworn police officer for the city of Mount Pleasant. If you want to say a few words?
I am very excited to serve this community, and I'm excited to work for a very good department. Thank you very much.
All right, welcome, Officer Smith. We're going to move on to the introduction to of the Parks and Rec Director, Phil Biscornen. Biscornen.
Good evening, Commissioners. The department head position of Recreation and Sports Director has been vacant since early March. Since that time, Phil Biscornen has been the acting director of the Recreation and Sports Department in addition to his regular duties as the Parks and Public Spaces Director. During this interim period, we have been evaluating the vacant position in Recreation, including meeting with various stakeholders to determine how best we could go about filling it. As a result of those discussions, we decided to restructure both departments into a combined Parks and Recreation Department. Herefore, we've had separate departments, right? As part of that restructuring, Phil Biscornen has accepted a promotion to the Director of the new Parks and Recreation Department effective May 9, and will carry the title of Director of Parks, Recreation, and Public Spaces. We continue to evaluate the best way to fill the remaining staff vacancy in Recreation. As you may recall from last year, or two years ago, actually, Phil joined the city in July of 2021 and has a background in parks management as well as recreation programming and event organizing in communities in Florida as well as his native Michigan. Phil holds both a bachelor's and a master's degree from Central Michigan University. Please join me in congratulating Phil in his promotion to the Director of Parks, Recreation, and Public Spaces.
I just want to say thank you for giving me this opportunity, and I look forward to serving in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a proclamation recognizing Gun Violence Awareness Day, which is June 2, 2023. I have two people here that are going to receive. Do you guys want to come right up here? I'll have you introduce at the end. I'll have you introduce yourself.
Yeah.
All right. This proclamation, whereas every day more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence and more than 200 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 17,000 gun homicides every year, and whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die of gun violence than than people in other high-income countries, and whereas Michigan has 1,382 gun deaths every year with a rate of 13.7 deaths per 1,000, 100,000 people, a crisis that caused the state $16.8 billion each year, of which 380.5 million is paid by taxpayers, Michigan has the 25th highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S., and whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities, and whereas cities across the nation, including in Mount Pleasant, are working to end senseless violence with evidence-based solutions, and whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the mayor's highest responsibility, and whereas support of the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories, and whereas mayors and law enforcement officers in partnership with local violence intervention activists and resources know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are being, are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe, and whereas gun violence prevention is more than ever, as we see, more important than ever, as we see an increase in fire homicides, firearm homicides and non-fatal shootings across the country, increased calls of domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence, whereas in January 2013, Haida Peddleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15, and on June 2, 2023, to recognize the 26th birthday when she was born, June 2, 1997, people across the nation will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in their tribute to, number one, Haida Peddleton and other victims of gun violence, and two, the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Haida's friends, who's, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2, the first Friday in June in 2023, to raise awareness about gun violence, and whereas by wearing orange on June 2, 2023, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And now therefore, I, Amy Perschbacher, Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, do hereby proclaim June 22, 2023, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Mount Pleasant, and encourage all citizens to support their local community's effort to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives and witness whereof. I have hereunto set my hand and the great seal of the city of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, on this 22nd day of May 2023. Thank you.
My name is Teresa Turner, and this is Glenn Lewandas, and we're here to represent the Great Lakes Bay Region Chapter of Moms Demand Action for Guns Sense in America. We want to thank the mayor and city commission for issuing this proclamation recognizing National Gun Violence Awareness Day, which is June 2, 2023. National Gun Violence Awareness Day marks the beginning of Wear Orange Weekend. Orange is the color that hunters wear to help keep them safe in the woods. We wear orange to keep, we wear orange to keep, because we want safety for our communities also. We invite everyone to wear orange on June 2, and during Wear Orange Weekend, June 2 through June 4. We encourage everyone to remember the millions of lives taken or impacted by gun violence. Our organization continues to educate, raise awareness, advocate, and rally for safe communities. To participate in Wear Orange activities, text ORANGE, O-R-A-N-G-E, to 64433. That is, text ORANGE to 64433. Together, we can build a future from gun violence. Thank you again to the mayor and the city commission for issuing this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we have the presentation of the 2022 Community Improvement Awards.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Planning Commission to present the winners of the 2022 Community Improvement Awards. This effort has been ongoing since 1979 as a way for the city to acknowledge property owners for their investment in our community. These projects add value to our public realm and bring pride and joy to Mount Pleasant. We will start at the residential category with our first winner, which is Kent Williams, who retrofitted the house at 502 Southon University with a new roof, replaced windows, and also added new siding with a darker color, which really highlighted the house's well-articulated facade, roof lines, large porch, and cute attic windows. Congratulations, Mr. Williams. Next, I'll call Maya Denslow, the owner of the restaurant Jambob, to receive the award for the commercial category. Maya, who is also an artist, has a quiet history in town. She had originally opened Jambob on Mission Street in 2019, but then when COVID emerged in 2020, she had to partially close. Today, we're lucky to have her reopening Jambob at 214 North Franklin Street, where the green tree used to be. As you can see, she did a marvelous job with the art that decorates the restaurant, providing a very unique experience to our residents and visitors, who can now access really delicious Korean food cooked by her. Please join in congratulating Ms. Denslow. And last but not least, these beautiful pictures that you see here are definitely not my doing. For the past several years, we have been collaborating with the Graphic Arts Program at Gratchit Isabella Technical Education Center. So this year's picture awards were created by Ann Rose, Cara Thompson, and Ternie Thompson. Please come forward so we can also recognize you and your work, and your instructor Andrea Langley, to receive this recognition. Congratulations again, and thank you all.
We have many great things going on in our community. Many, many very passionate people that live here. We are going to entertain any additions or deletions to the agenda at this time. Are there any additions or deletions? All right, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
May I move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. All right, motion carries. We will move forward. At this time, we have public input on agenda items. If you wish to bring forward something you would like to talk about that we are presenting up on the agenda, we do have three public hearings, so if you'd like to speak on something in one of the public hearings, you can speak now or you can wait until that time. If you wish to come forward, you will be asked to state your name, your address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to come forward?
We have one person in Zoom, but no hands up.
Okay. Is there anyone that wishes to come forward and speak at this time? All right, I am going to ask, are there any emails?
No, there are none.
Okay. We will move on to the receipt of petitions and communications. Manager dissents.
Receipt of petitions and communications includes the minutes of the Parks and Recreation Commission from February.
All right. We'll move on to the consent items. Are there any items you would wish to take off the consent calendar and place in the regular agenda? Seeing no commissioner saying anything, I'm going to ask Manager Dissents to continue with the consent items.
Consent items this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held May 8, 2023, consider approval of the employer delegate to municipal employees' retirement system, MERS Annual Meeting, consider appointment of city treasurer and deputy treasurer, consider amendment to the contract for bond council and municipal finance advising services with Dickinson Wright and Bezitsky &amp; Company for an additional $21,250 and $4,775, respectively. Consider approval of a contract with Pro Surfaces for Horizon Park Pickleball Courts and accompanying budget amendment for $24,450. Consider contract with Grand River Construction for the M20 pedestrian bridge superstructure replacement for $497,044.48, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
At this time, I will take a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All right. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. We will move on to our public hearings. Our first public hearing is about the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. Manager dissents.
Absolutely. So the city is considering an application for $38.4 million in funds from the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. This program is similar to the program that the city applied for in 2022 for funding to support the construction at the Water Resource Recovery Facility. The city's engineering consultant, Brian Van Zee of Fishbeck Engineering, is here to present the project to the residents. Residents are then able to speak at the public hearing on the proposed project. Following the public hearing, the city commission has asked for approval of the final project plan for application to the DWSRF program.
You guys have the floor.
Thank you. So as Erin mentioned, this is a public hearing on the DWSRF. It's Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund. We're going to kind of walk through the project plan we put together, how we came up with our alternatives, what was selected, and the financial cost of them. First slide here goes through the schedule of the SRF fund. The first couple we have completed, the project plan is now completed, and we advertised this public hearing, and then today is a public hearing. Next, we need to approve a resolution and then submit the final plan to the state by the end of the month. So in the project plan, the projects that we will cover are quite a few different areas. We have the Rainy System, that's a, one of your wells, work at the water treatment plant, lime sludge removal, a new water, raw water reservoir and a pump station to go with it, a new finished water tank and high-service pumps, work in the distribution system, and a new portable generator. Summary of the need for the work at the Rainy System. The well is an original well. It's a horizontal collector well. That means it's a big chamber that goes down and then has lateral pipes that go out and collect, collect the water and pump it into your system. It has the superior quality of water. It's very low in iron and costs less to treat. The, the well is periodically is cleaned and maintained and rehabbed, and lately, the, the amount of wet water that it's producing has been a noticeable decrease. Some electrical improvements at the Rainy System. Everything, again, is original. It's towards the end of its useful life. The step-down transformer and lighting panel needs to be replaced. The well motors and VFDs, the motors, there's a couple other wells out on the island. Those all need to be replaced. The main circuit breaker, MCC, is what they call it, that needs to be replaced, and the generator out there for backup power. The water treatment plant work, the need for the work at the water treatment plant. The plant was constructed in 1994, so it's 30 years old. It's at, for equipment-wise, that's about the end of its useful life. We need to start replacing the equipment. The clarifier valves all need to be replaced. The filters, the media needs to be replaced, and the distribution piping on it needs replaced. There's a recarb tank. The top of it needs to be removed and replaced, the valves on that one also, coating on the inside of the tank, and some improvements to the, the way the CO2 is piped into it. The aerator tower in there, again, that one needs to be blasted and painted, and then the, and that one also needs to be replaced. Chemical tanks, those are original, 30 years old. They're about 10 years past their life. They have had repairs and patches on them, and those need to be replaced. Some additional work at the plant. The roof is leaking in several locations. There's a lot of electrical equipment that's at the end, the medium voltage switchgear, the transformer, the main distribution panel, step-down transformer, again, all the lighting, VFDs, variable frequency drives, the motor starters, and switch disconnect switches. And then also, the generator at the plant, it's not sized to power the entire plant in the, in a, in a loss of power. The HVAC and humidifiers are old and causing a lot of maintenance, and the SCADA system, that's the program that monitors and runs all the equipment. The raw water reservoir, that's, that's a tank before it's treated, is what it would do. So the need for that is, is to convey water out to the, up to the plant. If you had this raw water tank, it would allow for better variables, so you can pump up to the tank in the middle of the day and then use out of that tank into the treatment plant during, during the night, so that you could use more of that high-quality water from the Rainy Well. The finished water tank and high-service pumps. Currently, these are out on the island with the Rainy Well. The, the finished water tanks are old concrete and in need of rehab. The high-service pumps, they are the pumps that pump your clean, treated water out into the system, and those, again, are past their useful life. They, out on the island is, makes it hard for staff to operate it because it's so far away from the plant, and the island, again, is also, that is in a floodway. So any major improvements out there would be very difficult to get that past Eagle or through the state for permitting. The distribution system work, there's several items on here planned. All the water meters, there's several different types in the system right now, I think four or five types. It makes it very difficult to keep parts on the shelf. They're an obsolete technology. The valves in the system make it so if there's a, a maintenance or repair, a water main break, you can isolate certain areas and not infect the whole city. A lot of those are inoperable and need to be replaced. An emergency connection to Union Township. Now, this would help during, say, a water main break, you could open that connection and it would allow you to keep pressure up in the system in the city. And then, there's a program going on right now to try to locate any lead or galvanized systems in the system, and any of those that would, that are found would be replaced. The portable generator, that's out for the Broome Field Well. It's aged and hard to find parts. It needs to be replaced. So in each one of these projects, we looked at different alternatives. At the Rainy At the rainy collector well, we have to go through each step, certain steps for each one, so a no action means we would do, do nothing out at, out at that collector. And what would happen? It would continue to function, but the capacity, the amount of water it would produce would continue to decrease. If we optimize the performance of it, that's basically a rehab, the collector would be, would be rehabbed, do laterals installed, and it would be put back into its original capacity. Construction alternative would be to tear that down and build a new well in its place. And then a regional is not applicable for this situation. The building for the rainy well, the electrical improvements there, if you did nothing, it would continue to function. There's a risk of failure, causing you to not be able to run the pumps. The generator is old and hard to find parts, again. If you optimized it, meaning rehabbed, you would replace all, all the MCC, replace the electrical, replace the generator, and put it back into a reliable electrical system. Construction alternative would be to, again, completely tear that right out and replace it with something new and different. The work at the water treatment plant, so no action, the plant would continue to function, reliability would decrease, maintenance would increase. Optimizing would be replacing the items that we've identified and putting it back into its original operating. The valves, same thing at the plant. I skipped around here, didn't I? So optimizing performances just kind of lists out each one that we talked about earlier. The clarifier valves, we'd be replacing those, filter would be replacing the media, all the supports, the valves would be electrically operated at this point. The aeration tower, again, we'd recode it, we'd replace all the media in that and the fans that blow through it. The chemical tanks, we'd replace them with in-kind, meaning size, capacity, and the roof would be replaced. Electrical system, all the, all the critical electrical items would be replaced. The HVAC boilers would be all replaced, and the SCADA system, the hardware and software would be replaced with a new, up-to-date. Continuing work at the water plant, if we did the construction alternative, that means it would, we'd tear out the entire water plant and build a new one, and a regional at this point is not feasible, not applicable. The raw water, again, this is the untreated tank, we did no action here, it would continue to operate, you just would not be able to take advantage of that high-quality water that comes out of the rainy. Optimizing performance, using existing raw, raw water cannot be optimized, really, so it would not solve the issues. A construction alternative is building new raw water tanks up at the water treatment plant and including a pump station to go with that, new electrical and outdoor to power it. Finished water, this is the treated water, no action, you'd continue to use the tanks that are down on the island and the high-service pumps that's down there, and maintenance would, would increase. Optimizing performance would be rehabbing those existing tanks, replacing the pumps, replacing the electrical in kind down there. Construction alternative, again, a construction on the island is not feasible through the state for permitting, so the construction alternative is building new freshwater tanks up by the water treatment plant and including high-service pump building to pump that water back out into the system. Lime sludge, we'll go into this further in the presentation, but sludge is used to help treat the water, and the used lime goes out into lagoons or ponds out at the treatment plant. Annually, those ponds need to be cleaned out and hauled away. So if you did no action on this project, you would continue to operate the way it is, and you would contract with somebody to haul it away. The downfall there is the cost to haul it away just keeps, cost just keeps going up. Optimizing performance, the city would purchase their own equipment, tractors and stuff like that to clean those ponds out and then haul it to fields themselves. Construction alternative, building another building out at the water treatment plant with equipment that would de-water the lime, make it weigh less, and so that it would cost less to haul it away. And a regional, again, is not, not applicable for this. The distribution system, no action, the water meters would continue to age, parts would be, will continue to be harder and harder to find, and billing as the age may be not as accurate. Optimizing performance would be not replacing the meters, but just rebuilding the ones that you have, and again, that's difficult because there's so many of them, you have to have all those parts on the shelf, and it would not solve the, the billing scenario. Construction alternative is replacing all of the meters with what they call AMI or smart meters. These meters are very accurate, they do not require staff to go around and read all the meters, they report right back to the, to the city hall. And these meters also have the ability for the customer to, to pull up and track their usage and try to optimize it. Continuing on the distribution, the system valves, if you did no action during a water main break or construction, it, it would continue to be hard to isolate those areas. Optimizing performance is aging valves would be replaced in kind, and then construction alternative, there's, there's no really alternative to construction in this because you're just replacing them, you can't do anything different. The distribution system connection to Union Township, if you did no action, you would continue the way it is. The wells, currently, you have some that are used as backup, but not, they don't produce enough. Optimizing the performance would be continuing the way you are again and optimizing, you can't get any more out of those wells to, to produce what you need. Construction alternative is building that connection with Union Township, that's basically connecting pipes between the two systems with belving so that you can open and close as you need. The service line replacement, again, the city is actively going through a program right now to investigate leads into the houses and determine what material they are. Any of them that are found, lead or galvanized by the state need to be replaced. So no action is not acceptable, the state will not allow you to do that. Optimizing performance, the water services can't be optimized, you have to replace them, so you have to go with the construction alternative to replace those with the newer material. Portable generator for Broome Field, no action, you can continue the way you are, but it's aging, and there's a risk of when you have a power failure, you may not have that backup available. Optimizing performance would be a new portable generator of the same size, so it's just replacing it exactly the same as you have now, but newer model. And construction alternative would be to build a permanent generator at that location that would turn on and off whenever the power went out. So now, going through the selected alternative of each one of those that we, that we chose, out at the rainy collector, this is an island, and it's a little small, but you've got that rainy well collector, you've got those two circles are those finished water tanks we discussed, and then there's also the existing high-service pump building out there. The selected alternative would be to rehab the rainy, take it down, clean it, inspect all the laterals and replace the ones that you need to. And then, again, all of the electrical out there would also be replaced and a new permanent generator put out on the site. The cost of that project is $4,760,000. Selected alternative at the water treatment plant is the optimized performance, it's replace all the valves and the clarifiers, improvements to the filters, the recarb tank would be rehabbed and new piping improvements there, the aeration tank or tower would be cleaned and recoded and new media put in there. All of the chemical tanks we discussed, those would be replaced, and new flow meters put in the plant throughout. Continuing the water treatment plant, the roof would be replaced, all the electrical discussed would be replaced, new power distribution, new generator, all of the HVAC equipment, the boilers, the air handler units, and all of the dehumidifiers would be replaced, and SCADA system, all the hardware and software would be replaced. Work at the water plant, total cost is $10,780,000. The selected alternative for the raw water reservoir pump station is to new construction, so it would be building new tanks and pump station at the water treatment plant site, allowing for the use of the softer water from the rainy well and pumping to take place during the night, and it allows for operational flexibility with the staff at the plant. Cost of that project is $5,190,000. Selected alternative, selected alternative for the finished water reservoir, that's the treated water, is to build new tanks at the water treatment plant site also, and to have pump station there, the high-service pump station to pump that out to the distribution. This would be moving everything off from the island out of the floodway and allow for staff to easily manage that being at the plant. This increases the system reliability, and the project cost is $9,80,000. The lime sludge project, so there's got a picture of it here, the building you see is the treatment plant, and those two big ponds are the used lime, so yearly, those ponds need to be cleaned out. And the selected alternative for this project is for the city to purchase their own equipment and, and clean those ponds out and dump it on city-owned fields. The estimated cost of that is $1,970,000. This would also, over time, you'd save the money of the contracting for a hauler to pay that back. Selected alternatives in the distribution system, replacing all of the water meters with that smart AMI meters, replacing broken valves out in the systems so that you've got the, so you're able to isolate. Building the emergency connection with Union Township, the estimated project cost for those three is $5,110,000. And then additionally, in the water treatment or in the distribution system is to replace those lead service lines, and right now, we're estimating $330,000 for those. The selected alternative for the Brown Field portable generator is to replace the aged generator in kind with a similar size, estimated cost of the generator is $130,000. We, environmental evaluations and considerations for the project, historical, archaeological, tribal, there's no direct impacts expected. Water quality, the project will not affect surface water or groundwater quality. Land and water interference, this is where they, they meet and come together, and there's no expected effects with that. The rainy collector work and any work on the island has to be permitted through the state. Endangered species, the project limits, has not found any endangered species within the limits. Agricultural land, no impacts are expected, and social, economic, direct cultural and social benefits will be seen and increased quality and reliability in the system. Impacts from construction, there's no adverse impacts for, on the streets, for traffic patterns and anything like that that are expected. Pedestrian routes are not expected to be affected, and all proposed construction will occur within city lands or in city rightways, and the city will cover the cost of work on private property for the water service lines. Mitigation measures during construction, if any arise, traffic, traffic routes will be designated, air admissions, there'll be measures for dust control and noise and for exhaust. Soil erosion, like on the island, there'll be measures put in place to control soil erosion and restoration, everything will be restored with seed, mulch, or hard surfaces to, to meet the existing. Long-term effects, soil disposal and contaminated soils, if any are found, will be hauled and disposed of as required by the regulatory. Soil erosion plan will be created and submitted for permitting, and direct environmental impacts, the proposed improvements would not create additional indirect environmental impacts. The public meeting was advertised on the city website on May 10, and a draft copy of the plan was uploaded along with it. So a summary of the project costs that we just went over, we've broken it up into currently two years, we do only submit to the state, the project plan goes in for the total, but we only submit for funding for the first year. So first year would be the work at the water treatment plant, the lime sludge project, and the lead service lines for a total of $13,100,000. And then additional projects after that would be the work at the rainy, the finished water tank and high-service pumps, the raw water tank, the work in the distribution system, and the portable generator, that work all totals an additional $24,300,000. This is just one way to look at it, there's several ways, but for those two years, the total cost, this was put, shown with a 20-year loan, you can also get a 30-year. The interest rate with the state is at 1.875, and this also is the total projects, it does not take into account any loan forgiveness or grants that you may receive. The city was, did qualify as an overburdened community. What that means is that you get those low-interest loans and you have the opportunity to get grant and loan forgiveness. And any, any questions?
Wasn't, sorry, I wasn't certain if we're going straight into public hearing. Could you go back to the, it was like the last slide, it showed the average costs, I believe, for, like, monthly costs, user costs, yeah, there. Monthly increase, 1109 for 2024 and 2048, could you talk about that a bit more, is that like per, like, average consumer and household?
That's for average household, but again, that's just one way we ran it. I know the city looked at it another way, but that is a 20-year loan, and it does not take into account the possible grant and loan forgiveness that you've applied for, so that would be taken off that total.
Gotcha, so asking about that then, would the monthly in, increase for 2025 be on top of the 2024 as like your, part of your projection? So would it be by the end of 2025, a $30 increase per month, essentially?
It would, but again, this is the worst case, so, you know, hopefully you get grant and loan forgiveness, and I think the city looked at it with a 30-year loan.
Gotcha, yeah, if, yeah, if you wanted to.
Yeah, absolutely, if I can speak to that too, it looks like the numbers that are being offered here also just, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, is this just number of users divided by that annual payment, is that what you're looking at there? Yeah, so that would just be taking all the users within the system, dividing that annual payment very evenly across the board, and that's what you would get, but the city does have, excuse me, a graduated sort of payment scheme where the more you use, the more you're billed essentially, so if you are a large complex that has an eight-inch line to it, you're going to pay more than the average household customer will. When we then take When we then take the percentage increase and we average that out for your average five eighths meter that an individual would have at their house, we would come up with even at full impact, about a $10 per month increase cost for the average just household.
And that was, that was total, right, Erin? That wasn't just the first year, that was.
That was total, correct. Yeah, and our finance, our assistant finance director, Chris Allen, you just noticed that's also taking that loan term out to 30 years. Versus we're showing 20 up here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bush.
Well, I want to thank you very much for addressing the environmental concerns so completely. I was going to ask, can you speak specifically as to what would happen to the sites that would no longer be used for, for these wells, like the island, like how, like what is Eagle going to ask of us slash what are the plans for, you know, mitigating those effects?
Okay, yeah, the, out at the island is the only one that would no longer be used. The rainy wells, all the wells out there would stay. But those circular tanks, the high service pump building would not. Eagle would require us to remove the tops off them, fill them in, restore the ground back to grass or stones. So it's, so it's natural conditions, so.
So that the tank would still exist, just be like filled in?
Right.
Commissioner Ake, you have a question?
Yeah, I do, but before I ask, could you repeat what you just said, your response to the tank?
Yep, so the tanks is how those would be removed or abandoned, as you take the tops off them. You drill some holes in the bottoms and the water drains through and then they would get filled up with soil. And then the tops would be restored with lawn or stone or something natural.
Okay, I wanted to know what would go inside them.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, well, right, you know, that helps. Chemical leaching into the earth, you know, so I'm worried about that.
Right.
I know we looked at this about two weeks ago and, you know, I, I sort of panicked a little bit and you said, don't panic. You know, we're not going to, we're not in a crisis mode. I did also ask in terms of, you know, accomplishing this task because it is, it's huge. It is a big task and I don't know how we're going to undertake all of this, but hopefully we will. And I had asked for prioritization. So coupled to that, you know, has to do with the cost that you just projected.
Right.
Is there any, you know, perhaps the, you know, city manager also might, you know, respond? Has there been any consideration given to people with or households with fixed income? Because if you're going to do this across the board, then it's everybody. And there are some people I, you know, who might say, yeah, that even that $10 or whatever it is you think, you know, might be a challenge for them. What considerations, you know, are we giving, are we going to think about, you know, the population affected and I don't know what percentage that, you know, demographic would be. But there are people in our community, you know, who have fixed income. And this might be, you know, cumbersome for them.
Yeah, that's okay, I think it would warrant both further consideration, but also further research as well. It's my understanding that we wouldn't be able to charge, let's say, different rates for different individuals with different income levels. Fair and equal protection under the law, under my understanding and regulation of, let's say, water wastewater systems would require us to essentially show a reason for the charge. And that's typically based off of consumption and use, not typically tied to household incomes or anything like that. So I think one, further consideration for how that would work. And then two, also just further research into if that's a possibility.
I would like to know if we could do, you know, some more research, just to find out. I mean, you know, there are cases where it have been exceptions, you know, I don't know how that would work, but it's worth, you know, looking into that. Thanks.
Are there any further questions?
This isn't a question, just a comment, I just think you've been so thorough and I appreciate the work.
Yeah, you're welcome.
You're here.
Yeah, thank you, Mary.
Anything else? All right, thank you, I'm going to open the floor for the public hearing, okay? If anyone is here and wishes to speak on the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, the final project for our water treatment plant, you may come to the podium. You will be asked to state your name and address and be given five minutes. If there's anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine. If you're joining Zoom by, Zoom by phone, you will be asked, you'll be brought into the meeting, asked for your name and your address and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom wishing to speak?
No raised hands.
Are there any emails while we wait for this gentleman to come up?
No emails.
Okay. Yeah, you guys up here, we need your name and address.
Tom Armstrong, I live at six oh four South Kenny. And I'm really here because of item 14. So if this is using up my five minutes for item 14, then I want to address this item.
Okay.
But if I get five minutes for both items, then I'm going to go ahead.
You get five minutes.
I just want to tell you, I, there's a handful of people in the room that I think remember this. Back in 92 or 93, when, when the city passed, and I don't remember if it was a bond issue or if we just got permission to increase water rates to build the water plant. And, and I was treasurer of the Committee for More and Better Water at the time. And we passed it, but it was a lot of work. And, and I guess my point is, I'm glad to see you were looking at keeping up what we built in 94 because we had gone too long without doing that and that's why we had to do what we did. I don't remember, 92 or 93. I would urge you to support these folks, they've done a thorough job, I think. I think this revolving fund is a great way to fund projects. I think if you can borrow this money at 1.48, you should borrow like 10 times as much as you need, because that's a great rate. But at any rate, that's my two cents and now I save my time for the next thing.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? At this time, I will close the public hearing and I will look to the commission. That doesn't mean you look back, I mean. I need a motion.
I move, so that we support, yes, go ahead.
Does she need to, we need to stand up?
You move.
I move that we support the project.
Okay, and designate the authorized project representative?
To sign, okay, should I read whole text?
It's helpful.
I move that we support the project and designate the manager. Is that the text that we're looking at?
Is that the one we're looking at? Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there further discussion? All right, we will take a roll call. Commissioner Wingard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Ake?
Yes.
Commissioner Asman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Altsager?
Yes.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries. We will move on to the next public hearing, which is an amendment to chapter 39, which is human rights. Manager DeSens.
So recently Governor Whitmer signed an amendment to the Michigan Elliott Larson Act. The amendment now applies to the following protections. Quote, "A person engaged in a real estate transaction or a real estate broker or salesperson shall not, on the basis of religion, race, color, national origin, age, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, familial status or marital status." Based on the modifications, staff reviewed the human rights ordinance and has proposed the attached to match compliance with the changes in state law. While the city already put into place protections for gender identity, the ordinance lacked language protecting gender expression. Residents are able to speak to the proposed changes at this public hearing. After the public hearing, the city commission is asked to consider approval of the proposed ordinance amendment.
All right, we will open the public hearing on the amendment to chapter 39, which is the human rights of the Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances. If you wish to speak on, in this public hearing, you may step to the podium, you'll be asked to state your name and address and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine. If you're joining Zoom by phone, you'll be brought into the meeting and you will be asked to state your name and address.
My name is David Siklka, I live at 301 East High Street. It's the big white house at the corner of High and Franklin. And I have a question, first of all, it seems to me that what's being proposed is an incomplete sentence because it does not say what the person should not do. Is there should, should there be another word in there or is that in the rest of the section of what's being amended? While, while you're thinking about that. I don't want to waste my five minutes.
Right.
In my line of work, I encounter a lot of people who are on the margins, who find themselves, for whatever reason, discounted, disrespected, never thought of, never considered, or sometimes just downright hated. And this, I don't think goes far enough, but it's a step in the right direction and it sends a very clear message. And I think in a community like ours, where we expect students to come to a university, to come sometimes from other countries, where they don't enjoy some of the privileges and freedoms and protections that we do in this country. I think it's very important that we make this explicit, that we say this out loud, that we stand on the side of those who really fear for their lives at times. I moved here from Iowa and the Iowa legislature has recently enacted some laws that are sort of the opposite of this. And a lot of my friends are talking about leaving, about moving somewhere else because they don't feel safe. I think this may seem perfunctory to you. It may seem like the state did it, so let's just jump on the bandwagon. But this is much more important, I think, than that. And I applaud you for considering this and I urge you to pass it and then to think about how to make it stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Have we read the text that he felt needed another word?
In looking at the updates to the Elliott Larson Act, it looks like what I had done is I had chopped out a section of it to just highlight that discussion on the gender and identity and expression. That Elliott Larson Act obviously goes further with several different chunks, but really in my memo, I was just trying to show what the modifications were and what we were narrowing in on there. Of course, a full copy of the proposed amendment is within the city commission's packet for this meeting and can also be found online as well too. So that was just, again, an excerpt from the actual act. What we are considering this evening is much broader than that.
Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward?
Someone left their certificate here and I just don't want to set my water on it. I'm still Tom Armstrong, I still live at six oh four South Kenny. Several years ago, I, I spoke at a conference for the church I attend or used to attend regarding their policy regarding LGBTQ individuals. And at that meeting, I was able to, to tell this statewide group of the United Methodist Church that I have a son who is part of the LGBTQ community. I don't care to go into any more details than that. But that, that he lives in the city of Mount Pleasant, he did at the time, he still does. He, he worked in, in, for a national corporation in the city of Mount Pleasant. He was a student at Central Michigan University. And he was a United Methodist. And the only place of those four that he could suffer institutional discrimination was his church. The church hated it, I don't attend United Methodist Church anymore, my wife still does, blah, blah, blah. What I wanted to get to is I'm just so proud of the city and the township, I've spoken to the, at township meetings on this before, for, for taking this stand, I would concur that it's not enough, but it's, it's what we can get. And I, and I would urge you to support this addition to the, to the, is it an ordinance? It's not really an ordinance, it is an ordinance. To, to make it comply with the Elliott Larson Act and, and that would be just super, so thank you.
All right, we have one more coming up.
My name is Ross Rappaport, 1413 Cross Lane Street in Mount Pleasant, of course. And I don't really have a lot to add to what has already been said. I think I am very proud of this community, I've lived here 40 years with my wife and I raise our children here. And I'm very proud of the community for considering this and working to create an environment where people of all walks and backgrounds and lives are included and involved and accepted in the community. And I think that we, no matter what anybody else does, that is really important that we continue this, these efforts on behalf of all people. So thank you very much and I, I hope you support the amendment.
Thank you.
The change in the ordinance, whatever the right term is, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Are there any emails?
No emails, no raised hands on Zoom.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak? At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and I'm going to once again turn towards the commission. Are there any questions that you have for staff before we proceed to a motion? Yes.
Is it okay to make, say something?
Yes.
Besides a question?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank the city manager, staff, you know, we talked about this earlier when you presented this to us. And, you know, as I said earlier, it is important for us to it's important for us to recognize the significance of everyone's experience. It's important for us to recognize that everybody, regardless of who that person or they are has human rights. And that these are protected rights, they have dignity. They have these rights because they are human. And that they do have dignity and that that is also protected. So that we are doing this, I said this before. I realize that we could do more, but this is a good step. We're doing this makes me happy to see that I live in this city. And last time I said, I could at least brag, right? Yes. So I also do hope that we don't stop here. The world is changing around us and it's changing in all sorts of ways. And you've heard our members here talk about, you know, being welcoming to everybody. But if we are going to make our city the city that we want it to be in the future, a welcoming place, a safe place for people, we have got to undertake these challenging tasks. For me, this is important. So I am proud to see that we are doing this. I am going to support it, you all know me, I will support it, I don't have to announce it here, I will support it, I am for it. And I do hope that my colleagues come with. And I do hope that my colleagues come with me and support this, because it is good for Mount Pleasant, it is good for our residents, it's good for all of us. It really is.
Is there anything else? I'll entertain.
I just wanted to say I have something in common with one of our speakers, that I'm also from Iowa, and I'm glad that I live in Michigan.
Yes.
I look forward to continuing the discussion.
Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
I will move that we support the changes or the additions to the human rights ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there further discussion? At this time, we will move to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Asman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ake?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wingard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alziger?
Yes.
Mayor Poshbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We will move now on to our next public hearing on the 2024-2029 Capitol Improvement Plan. Manager descends.
Absolutely. So the Capitol Improvement Plan has been the subject of a couple of different work sessions now, and now per the city charter, a public hearing must be held before the adoption of the Capitol Improvement Plan. After the public hearing, the city commission will not need to take immediate action tonight as the Capitol Improvement Plan will be brought back to the city commission for final consideration at the first meeting in June.
All right, I will open the public hearing. If anyone is here wishes to speak about the Capitol Improvement Plan for 2024 to 2029, please stand up, come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you wish to join us, if you're joining us by Zoom and you want to talk about the Capitol Improvement Plan, you may raise your hand or use the star nine if you're coming by phone. You can, you'll be asked to state your name and your address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak at this time? Is there anyone on Zoom?
Nobody on Zoom.
Are there any emails?
No, there are not.
Okay, because this is not an item that we need action on, and I see no one running to the podium. I'm going to close the public hearing, and we're going to move on to new business. There is no new business, but we'll move on to the announcements for city-related issues and new business. This is where the commission and any staff can state anything that they wish to announce or something they wish the city staff to investigate. Commissioner Bush?
Just briefly, I want to congratulate the top students of Mount Pleasant High School. We're just announced this past week, and the entire class of 2023 will be graduating the week after Memorial Day. They had a lovely time at Promenade on Saturday, and congratulations again to all the class of 2023.
Vice Mayor Alziger?
I just wanted to highlight some things from our Parks and Rec Department, that they are doing a Walk 50, that over the summer months, you might want to log in and walk your 50 miles. And the other one is some Wednesday night activities called the Beat the Heat. So there's some good activities from the Parks and Rec Department.
Excellent. Anyone else?
I'd just like to bring back up, we're having open enrollment for the city garden, the community garden in Orchard. And I know there's a bit of discussion amongst us before the meeting, and we're wondering if we could get a quick update on approximate number of applicants.
As of this morning, there were 13 applicants.
Thank you.
And we have 15 plots?
That is correct.
Okay, and how long is this open?
Till June 1st.
Okay. So we have until June 1st to fill up those last plots. What happens if we get too many?
The city will be holding a lottery, so we will take the names that we have available to us and do a random drawing.
Okay. Excellent.
Out of a matter of self-interest, as one of the people who might be in that lottery, I posed to the city commission what kind of number we'd want to look at before we considered expanding, like expanding the garden. If there's 16 applicants, I imagine it's not probably worth it to, like, add on to the plan, but if, I don't know, if there's 30 applicants or more, like, might we take up the idea of?
I say we would cut it off at 75,000.
Yep.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
That would be quite a bit of equipment to.
But what if you just simply have 13 people, maybe 15 people, the exact number? Then we won't have to be distressed by, you know?
No, not at all.
Well, I encourage anyone who wishes to participate in the community garden to go to the website and sign up for it. Are there any other?
I have a quick update about the International Relations Committee. We are going to take a group, hopefully, to OCAIA this summer. Currently, let's see, I'm looking at the email message, which says, I do know that the application form was prepared and disseminated to schools. Right now, a subcommittee met, and they have screened the applications. It doesn't tell me exactly what the selection looks like, but it does say that we are geared enough to go. So I will let you know as soon as I have more information about, you know, how many people, how many people are going, how many come from, you know, the Mount Pleasant High School. My understanding is that in previous years, they have had difficulty getting people from the high school, you know, students from the high school to go. I don't know why. But as of now, it says we have found a flight that is within our desired dates of travel, and I don't have all that information. But I will share that once I get that.
Excellent. Yes.
Well, I'm the executive director of Clothing Inc., and this month, United Way is matching any money that is donated to United Way on behalf of Clothing Inc., up to $15,000. So if you can get out your phones and just text CLOTHING to 91999, and just, everybody can do that today, and that would be helpful. 91999.
91.
And the same number, 75,000, would be great.
Okay. Yes.
One more brief thing just came to mind. I got the opportunity to experience the new wayfinding signs at Deerfield County Nature Park, sponsored in part by our Convention and Visitors Bureau, as well as the Rotary. They're an excellent resource for people using Deerfield Park, and I've already heard lots of positive feedback about them. They look great.
Excellent.
I have a question. So I do recall that we got an email from a resident complaining about the speed limit on, what is it? Is it?
Washington.
Washington. So, I don't know.
I'd like to say I did slow down.
I usually crawl, so you don't have to worry about me. You know, I'm like, you know, snail speed.
I do believe that we have a resident that's on Zoom that's going to speak during that time.
Oh, okay, all right. That's good.
Is there anything else?
No, that's my last.
All right, so we are going to close the announcements on city-related business, city-related issues and new business, and we'll move on to public comment, on agenda and non-agenda items. If you wish to speak on something, you may come to the podium, state your name and address. You'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you can use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Yes.
Douglas Collins, Apartment 4132001 Alpha in Mount Pleasant, Michigan. I wish they would get rid of these scooters that, I guess people can ride them and they get off them. Why can't, I heard that they cost about 40 cents a minute to ride those things, and they only go about eight miles per hour. I don't know. When I was bicycling, I went past a scooter, and I went way past it. I have low vision, and I don't see those things very well on the road. I haven't run into anything, but, and also, I walked a carry, with a shopping cart to get, to carry groceries, and sometimes those scooters are in the way, and to get them out, so it's just in the way. So I think it might, now I heard other people, Winchester Towers also use motorized wheelchairs, and they have trouble, they're in the way for people who want to get out of there. So why don't we get rid of those things, that people can just work off a little bit of the excess by doing, but we're a fat society, and they can work off a little bit of the excess by just walking to their places.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Dave Siklka, 301 East High Street. I didn't check the agenda carefully, didn't realize you were going to be talking about snow removal on city sidewalks. My house sits on a corner, so I have two sections of sidewalk that the city is committed to remove the snow from. And I have to say that the efforts of the city are not very effective. Usually, it's two to three days after the snowfall that they get to the sidewalks, and by then, it's all tromped on and is just kind of lumpy ice, and the equipment that the city uses doesn't really take it off. When we first bought our house, we'd had to live elsewhere and come back, and I didn't do any snow removal on my sidewalks because I thought the city was doing it. And partway through the winter, we came to the house to check on some things, and our sidewalk was just a sheet of ice. So I have to do it anyway, so I don't think it's money well spent.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom?
There is. I'm going to move them into the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, you should be able to speak and be heard.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Amanda Garrison. I am at 430 South Washington Street, and I've been, I've actually lived in Mount Pleasant since 2011. I started on Washington Street and then moved to Fancher, and then back over here on Washington. And Fancher Street has some pretty fast traffic for the speed limit that it is. I do believe that it's 35 or 25 on Fancher. Washington's 25, Main Street's 25, and we are consistently watching highway traffic move through this little neighborhood here. And it's actually not a little neighborhood, so the center of the city has all of these streets that don't have stop signs for long distances or several blocks. We need to have some intervention. It would be good, I think, for the commission to do some research on what sorts of interventions might work the best for the streets that we live on. I don't know what those things are. I think there, you know, there are a lot more than speed bumps or whatever. I think stop signs could work, but that always seems like a hammer coming down kind of thing. So I don't know if that's the will of the commission, but I really would encourage some sort of intervention on the part of the commission as the protectors of our public safety. So I don't want to see squirrels smashed. I don't want to see children running across the street quickly because they're going to get hit on their bicycles. I'm a pedestrian. I've seen puppies run out of my neighbor's house into the street because they were so excited about something, and that's a terrifying thing to see, little animals running out in the street when it's 55 miles an hour in the city. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? At this time, I'm going to close public comment. I'm going to ask the commission, would they like to go to recess, or would they like to move on to work session?
Recess, five minutes will be okay.
Okay, I'm going to take a show of hands, recess? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess. We will be back at 8:27.
Hello? Hello? Yes. Oh, I get it. Oh. Yeah. Yeah. Look at all those things going down there. Yeah, you know. It's kind of very frustrating because some folks, some people, she comes through the lines. I don't know. And I get that, you know, the same guys. I assume I'm putting this out. I guess. I don't know. 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 I don't know.
So it's an independent franchise?
Yeah, two of them, both of them, the same.
Okay, we will resume our meeting. We're going to move into the discussion of sidewalk snow removal. Manager, just answer.
Yeah. So during your conversation at the city goals and objectives work session back in February, I know the several points were discussed regarding snow removal on the city sidewalks. Enough interest was generated at that conversation, I think, to warrant a work session discussion on this. And so really, we just want to have that work session this evening here far in advance of our next essentially snow season here. But I think that the, there's a few main questions here that I want to take the city commission through. And I think that has to do with one, that is, what is the goal of the city commission respective to sidewalk snow removal? And I want to remind the city commission that currently no ordinance exists that requires residents to move snow from sidewalks. Our public works director, Jason Moore, has prepared a memo that tees us up for this conversation, talks about more or less the current state that we have regarding snow removal within the city. So that is roughly 30 miles of the city is, let me go back to Jason's memo here, but 30 miles of the city is residential sidewalks that we clear, five miles of the city is parks, infrastructure that we clear. And then there are 20 or so miles that are cleared by businesses as commercial entities are required to clear snow and ice from in front of their properties. And then there's no requirements for the remaining roughly 35 miles. I think it's worth noting that in internal conversations with the city staff, our public works department expressing that roughly 75% of the city residents just clear their sidewalks in general. I think most people kind of assume that we do have an ordinance as it is pretty typical in other communities. But coming back to the goal of the city commission, it's, you know, what is our goal? At, at the goals and objectives meeting, it was expressed that snow on sidewalks would be an obstacle to a walkable community. Is it the city commission's interest to see that all snow is removed from the sidewalks that it's done within a 24, 48 hour period from a snow event? What about ice as well too? Because currently, as you had heard, the city only removes snow from the sidewalks when, on the routes that we clear. We are not currently equipped to handle ice. So maybe starting there and then working our way through, the idea would be to see what the city commission's goal is, and then who would be responsible for clearing the sidewalks. And then from there, we can talk about what treatment or remedy we could put in place to meet that goal.
Okay. So what do y'all think?
I think if we have an ordinance that grass can't be above a certain length, we really should be considering something that requires people to clear snow. Because clearing snow is, is a much greater detriment to the public good than the height of grass.
I agree.
Anybody else got any thoughts on this?
Well, I think my job as a city commissioner is represent people. So I don't think my opinion really matters until people share what their opinions are, right? So for me to just give you my opinion and say, I think everybody should have to, I mean, what's our community really think about it? I think that's important to me, not just what I think. So, I mean, I don't, I think the same way, you know, there's, there's pros to doing it, but there's cons to doing it too.
I would, I would support an ordinance if it's supported by community members. And I think it, it would behoove us maybe to reduce the number of miles that we clear because that could coincide with having an ordinance.
Help me understand that logic, Mary. I'm just curious. I'm not, I'm not picking on what you said, just.
No. Well, like in the map that's in our packet, there's some neighborhoods that the kids probably aren't walking to school. They, in my mind, they wouldn't be critical for, for school safety. So if there's an ordinance and there's a lot of homeowners there, it'd be nice, in Amy's world, you, you help each other out. In my world, you do too. But, you know, that would mean maybe people that work from home might do their own sidewalk and their neighbor's sidewalk too.
Makes sense.
If we were to adopt an ordinance, can we get somebody to speak to enforcement? Like what would that would look like? Would it be, you know, similar to grass or what could we expect? What do other communities expect from enforcement?
Yeah, it would be very similar to grass. Our code enforcement department would handle it. Currently, they enforce it in the business, commercial areas. And so it would just carry over into residential areas.
And you see that as being feasible?
Again, we have to manage expectations. If the expectation is that everybody who doesn't have their sidewalk shovel gets a ticket on a certain day, that isn't going to happen. We just don't have the manpower for that. But what we typically do, well, I don't, I don't, I don't want to give that, that strategic thing out. But there, there's a method to the madness, so to speak, and so that we cover the entire city. As it comes to grass.
Sure, sure.
Parking.
But I mean sidewalks would be harder to view from a vehicle, I can imagine, than than the height of grass. Not really?
No.
Okay.
Just drag around.
I want that job.
I'm sure I can.
I think an ordinance would help. I mean, according to, you know, what the information we got anyway, 60, is it 60 to 75% of residents already clear snow on their side, you know, in the sidewalk? I think, you know, it's something like that. Did I misread it? Yeah, it says 50 to 75% of homeowners do that already. So what we're looking at is just a small section, right? I'm particularly concerned about the section that is close to CMU because there are a lot of students who don't have cars and don't necessarily want to use their bikes over the winter. And they walk down that particular area. So and it's, for me, it's always been the same area where I see bottleneck. It's on Glen, that section where, you know, Glen, Preston runs into United Apartments. And that runoff, that's a dangerous place for students. I've seen students fall. I have seen walkers who are not students trip because it becomes really, really piled up with, you know, ice, especially after the snowflow goes past. And then you have ice there. Yeah, you know? So maybe the issue is the icing. But then there's that also, that stretch too between Glen and what's the next street? Is it Highland?
Highland, yes.
Yeah. You know, this, I know that it's rental property. And I tell you, I know who it is. Okay. And I remember asking that question, what happens to rental property? You said businesses can do that, but rental property doesn't apply to them. It should apply to them. Why is that, you know, it looks like 200 feet or 200 yards. Yeah, we never plowed until the city comes and does it. But somebody who owns that property makes money there. So for me, it is, sorry, it's irresponsible. Let me just go down, Ake. You know, it is problematic because students use that path all the time. And that's a very dangerous path.
But according to the map, it looks like that's a street that we do plow the sidewalks on, right? The green?
On Preston.
On Preston, between Glen and Highland.
I think, I think the point.
Red just means one side, right?
Yeah, the red's just one side. I think if I'm picking up a Marine, just kind of restating what, what I'm thinking you're saying is just that, like for commercial, like rental properties, the fact that like businesses have to pay or have to shovel their own snow. What's the difference between a residential, like a commercial residential property where people are being, making money there by owning that? So what's the difference between that and a regular business?
Well, I think part of that is I have an Airbnb. I, I have to use the city trash because I'm not, I have a rental license on my house. And so I have to participate with the city trash. I can't get my own trash provider. So it's very similar, right? To, to say, there, there is a difference between a rental and a business. And they've, it's been very clear with the rental that I have. And so, and I think we get into a dangerous situation when we, we start, now again, this doesn't affect me. I don't have a sidewalk. I live on Pickard. Right? So, but when we start to get into a dangerous area, when taxpayers are paying for the service that they're getting and we start taking it away, as our taxes, houses are being reassessed and our taxes are going up. I mean, I just got a reassessment and my taxes went up. And again, I don't get, my sidewalks don't get cleared because I don't have one. So it doesn't affect me. But when we start taking away services and raising taxes, it just, I, I know that's problematic.
But is that service, I, again, I just need clarity. I'm sorry. But is that, you know, is this, is that stretch part of the responsibility of the city? Or is it, you know, somebody has rental property there? That stretch is adjoining that particular property? Why is it not cleared? Why doesn't the person clear it? And so maybe it's the city's responsibility. That's one aspect. But I'm also concerned about that no man's land. There is a section, I'm calling it no man's land, where nobody takes responsibility. It's less than 100 feet. It's that over, you know, what is it? You know, the runoff? You know, the sewer drain thing, the canal. Okay?
No, that would be CMUs.
It's not CMUs. It's too far. It's after.
It's.
It's after.
But isn't that where their?
No, you're talking about the south side. That's CMUs. They take care of that. I'm talking about the north side.
Oh, okay.
You know, there are two sections. There's the school, the old school, the one room school, and then opposite it. It's sitting between the two Glens. Next to it would be the United Apartments. And then, you know, Glen goes one way on that side and on the other side, it goes in both directions. It is right there.
As you go up that hill there? There's like that little hill there?
The hill is at the CMU side, but it's the opposite side, the north side of it. And so that's where I've seen people, they could easily fall into that drainage if you didn't have that railing there. So.
I definitely think it would be worthwhile to, to identify spots like that, that, that are no man's land, as Commissioner Ake said. I wanted to kind of play devil's advocate in terms of the property owners. I mean, I am 100% on board with asking property owners to take responsibility for their sidewalks, whether that be a rental or owned by an individual who's residing at that residence. But I will play devil's advocate in that I think one of the reasons why we're not currently treating them or treating rental units like a business is because a business implies the possibility of, I think, public access and public using that, that area, whereas a rental property is accessed by the residents, not, not any particular, yeah.
But you're making money out of it.
Well, you're making money. And I, again, I'm.
Where is the money going?
I'm, I'm agreeing with you to a certain extent, but I think the difference is, like Commissioner Chapman said, is we do have to draw the line. And I'm just playing devil's advocate that in that, and don't get me wrong, I support people clearing their sidewalks. But I'm saying one of the reasons why it is currently different is because, yes, they're making money, but the public is not necessarily, so we, one of the reasons why businesses, I think, are required right now under current ordinances is because the public needs access to these businesses, whereas the public doesn't necessarily need access to rental properties. Again, just devil's advocate.
I, the one thing I would say, I would say with that is like when we're kind of taking it back out to the larger picture, if our goal is walkability, walkability doesn't come from having islands of access.
No, that's true.
It, it comes from having a complete network. How we go about achieving that, I'm not saying like we need to like, like start treating like property owners differently or like renters differently or anything. I, I'm not familiar with the process or so, like what you were saying and what Commissioner Chapman was saying educates me a lot on that. So, yeah, but just our. So, yeah, but just our, if our goal is walkability, it has to be a complete network. And the faster that we can do that is kind of like if we can increase the speed at which we accomplish that, that's seems to be the best outcome.
I, I do, I do agree with that. I don't want to.
If I could follow up on something, Commissioner Chapman, I do like what you were saying about like suddenly creating an ordinance and creating more work for the, for our residents and everything. Kind of seems if we're already doing these services, like if we have resources put towards this, I mean, salting, for example, I imagine takes less time than it does to plow a section of road. I mean, you can, I just based on like the action that you're performing.
Salt is only effective up to a certain temperature.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, my, my thought, my, something I was thinking about is like if we were to like require residents to shovel their own sidewalks, would it be easier for than the city to just say, instead of plowing, we're going to focus more on salting? So you go out in a timely fashion, shovel your sidewalks, and then we're deicing like.
If we're, if we're talking about salting the sidewalk, we currently don't have the capability of doing that. Our equipment isn't capable of salting sidewalks. So that would be a change. And I'm not sure that it would really be that much faster to do that. Because you're really, it's mostly the time that you've got going along, you know, going along those thirty-five miles.
Okay.
You know?
I love.
Yes.
So if you talk about this ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong. What is the limit that we won't plow the road if there's X amount of snow? Has to be over a certain threshold? So are you going to adopt that to a sidewalk as well?
Well, we're not talking, we're not talking about creating an ordinance. We're talking about whether or not we should do something. But what is the, when do we start plowing with snowfall?
Say the threshold is two inches for the city to plow the street. Is it four?
I'm actually not sure. It all depends on the type of snow. It's more complicated than just so many inches.
Does that apply to the sidewalk then, if you have an ordinance or, you know?
Yeah, I mean.
So if we get just a minimal amount of snow, you're still responsible to clear it? I'm just trying to clarify.
It just depends on, it depends on the forecast, depends on the type of snow and all of that. But yeah, there would have to be a standard. It would, it would follow the same standard of the sidewalk that we plow today. And as you've heard, some folks are not quite satisfied with that. It is what we're capable of with the level that we have, so.
No, I'm not judging that. I just was wondering how, is there a standard for like if, you know, the amount of snowfall on the sidewalk, I guess, if you will?
I can speak to previous communities that I've worked in. And typically, it's not an amount of snowfall. Typically, it's just gauged by the, the effort or safety that one can navigate the sidewalk by. So if it's deemed as unsafe, right? You've, you've left several inches of snow there that pile up and harden and, and now it's slick. That would be what it's gauged by typically in, in other communities.
Fortunately, the world we live in, though, everybody has an opinion on what is safe and what's unsafe. And I feel that we're going down a slippery slope.
We call that a perspective.
Sure.
Yes.
Everybody has a perspective, but that just seems like a slippery slope.
It is.
Pun intended.
I think that's why they have it where if the sidewalk, the sidewalk needs to be clear. That's, that's the standard.
Yes.
Because I, I, I can speak from experience where there was snow, like say up in Marquette, Michigan, where they did a couple inches, I think it was three inches at the time, and your sidewalk had to be clear. And people would go out and stomp on the snow. And then it's not three inches anymore. And but the sidewalk, so that's the danger of clearing this. And then it makes it more difficult on subsequent snowings. Because now it's packed, ice, so on and so forth. That's why the sidewalk shall remain free of hazards.
Makes sense.
Yes.
Yes.
That's how I clear my driveway. I just run my car back and forth and pack it down.
It seems like that would honestly be more work than just shoveling it.
Yeah.
To stop it down. Well, and I think, I think this gets too into the scooter thing.
I was about to say.
You know, because I, I, I think, I don't have a problem with them. But the reality is, I mean, somebody shared today, like when, when there's people on electric, there's no way to move those. And my understanding, and we don't need to get into this probably, but my understanding was that those were going to be in hubs and things. And I mean, I've seen, I've, I've watched people like strolling down in their little Amigo and then one sit in the way and they're trying to go around it, then they got in the grass. And I mean, that's not, that's, that's not okay.
Well, they're not supposed to be on the sidewalk, except in certain areas. They're not even supposed to be ridden on the sidewalk.
The ordinance says they can be ridden on the sidewalk.
That's it?
But the scooter says, the scooter says, don't use on the sidewalk.
Yeah, the scooter says that.
But the ordinance says they can be ridden on the sidewalk.
Well, let's change that.
I'd like to make a motion.
Can we just finish discussing what we're discussing?
We don't make motions in our discussion. Commissioner Ake.
I, I, you know, I, listen, I don't have property. I don't own a business. I'm not renting any property. But I am concerned about the issue of, I'm concerned with the safety of people using the sidewalk. Okay, so sometimes, you know, so the, you know, they're forced to. I've seen people sort of stepping off the sidewalk because it's so icy or so slippery that they can't really walk on it. So they start using the bike lanes, right? You know, yeah, and that's not safe either. And so a walkable city, again, because I live within close proximity of campus and I watch students go back and forth. That's why I'm, that's why I keep talking about the same area. Okay, I've come here and complained even before being on this, being, being here as a commissioner. Same area, that particular location, you know? If, if, let's say hypothetically, I do know that the city clears the, you know, eventually clears the sidewalk. But that takes, as they say, it takes several days before they do that. Meanwhile, it's become icy. So if we are, you know, I would be happy if we had a uniform, some kind of uniform ordinance that applies to everybody, regardless of what kind of business you have, whether you're a business with a big B or your business with a small b, in this case, your rental property. I'm okay. So that it applies to everyone evenly. These are the same expectations that we have for all people. Then let's just go ahead with that. And that way, nobody's going to come in and say, you've discriminated against me because, okay? But I do think that if we are really, if we're seriously thinking about walkable city, you know, and safe place for people, students, people with scooters, some of them are parked down the street from me, by the way. You know, again, it's the same area that they'll be applying. This is something that we need to think about. You know, there are two paths, Preston to Crawford, Watson to High, those two.
Okay. Commissioner Bush?
So I just think it's worth plugging this into the conversation too, because it's a kind of one of those like can of worms type situation. The salinity of Lake Michigan has gone up drastically in my lifetime from about, I think it said like one milligram of chlorine per liter of water to fifteen milligrams per liter, which is still obviously nowhere near the ocean, but a significant increase. And already, our Isabella County Road Commission is, you know, talking about other, other options for areas. And I know that, you know, it's just a little bit of salt on everybody's sidewalk. But if we were going to be introducing some, you know, new sidewalk approach to the conversation, I think a conversation about what materials people use would also need to play a role, which I know makes things more complicated. But in an effort to be, you know, a climate change prepared community, we need to include that in the conversation.
Okay. Is there any other comments? Okay, so one thing that I'm going to put out there is I really do think that we should constantly push for a community, that everybody works together and we try to help each other. The city started the, the plowing of many sidewalks when I first came on because they felt that they, that that was needed, because there were so many sidewalks that were not being plowed or not being cleared, they thought. I think that, you know, we continue doing the sidewalks that we have. But we also put out an ordinance or we put out something that says, hey, as a community, we should be working together and trying to clear sidewalks together. I know many people that will go out and they will clear their sidewalk and they will keep going down the street and they'll clear their neighbor's sidewalk and they'll go around. I know one gentleman whose wife allowed him to buy a toy and he clears many sidewalks in the area. You know, he'll clear yours if you, you know, give him a bottle of wine. But there are, we can work together here. And we should encourage everyone within our limit, within our city limits, to work as a team, to work as a community and to help each other. If your neighbor doesn't clear their sidewalk and you're out there clearing yours, there's nothing wrong with you pushing the shovel a little further down. We should always be willing to make that something that we do because it's not just our neighbor that may not be able to clear the sidewalk. It's somebody who's walking down that street, walking down that sidewalk that needs it cleared. So I would encourage something that we could put together, that the staff could think about, that would really encourage community, really encourage us all working together, the city doing their part and the residents doing theirs.
I agree. We actually could look at this like, like an opportunity in what Mayor Perschbacher is saying in terms of building community, an opportunity for different generations to work together. You know, I can see a network built on social media of, you scratch my back, I scratch yours type thing.
That's a good idea. I mean, we could put out some kind of, I don't know whether it's a public service statement or flyer around the winter saying, hey, you know, this is what we are able to do, but we encourage people to do this and do that, put that on our website. And if for some reason you desperately, desperately need help, you know, you know, and you can't do it and we can do it, maybe even encourage people, you know, to, I don't know, start a platform where if you need help, hey, this is how you can reach out to people who can, you know, who can come help you. I do know that somebody comes to help me each time, you know, we have six to seven or eight inches or twelve inches of snow and I can't get out of my driveway. And this person shows up and does it. And I am always, you know, forever grateful to this person who helps me get out of, you know, out of my driveway, although the city comes back and sends all that snow back into my driveway.
County does it for me. I'm Pickard, so, yeah.
Okay, now what, you know? But, you know, yeah, maybe just do some kind of document or, you know, F1, you know, information platform page or something.
But we would probably have to have some, some sort of ordinance to back it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Commissioner Bush?
I would love to see something from staff and us with, with the cooperation of the commission. Ideally, I, I really, I know I bring this up a lot, but I really think the farmer's market is a great way to get out information. And it's also, you're talking with people who believe in our community and who are networkers in our community. And I, I mean, we could just reach so many people, just boom, 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 boom. I mean, obviously, they're open till the end of October, but through the end of September is their, you know, probably the more high-profile or high-traffic times.
Yeah. It could be one of those informatic things, you know, the, you know, like a rack card informatic piece where you say, hey, you know, if you, just in case, this is what we encourage you. Need help? Can't do it? Here's some, here's, you know, it would be like your two-one-one, really, you know?
I think, I, I don't share this to brag, but, you know, we're talking about community and I, I, I agree with you a lot, actually. So I was driving by my, my brother, it doesn't matter where he lives, because I don't want to tell you where this is. But I was driving down the road the other day and a neighbor of like two houses down from my brother has this big old property, doesn't mow it at all. And so it looks like it's vacant. And so, so today I was like, I'm gonna go mow that.
Did you mow it?
Hold on. You hold on. All right, so I load my mower on my trailer, I load my edger, I load my weed whip. I spent two hours there and I walked out to the house. And guess what they just got on their door today? The sticker from the city that says they're gonna get, they're gonna get a ticket. So I spent two hours making this property look real nice. And then, I mean, I literally, I got, I, I went home at six fifteen, took a shower. I was all black. I was covered in dirt. And so I think, I think people will do things for people that are, are in need of help. And I, I, I don't know, I don't know. I, I'm so hesitant to, whether we take away a service or we just tell people, hey, you're gonna do this, you're gonna get a ticket. I just don't know. I, I'm not about like, unless it's a huge problem, and maybe it is, that, again, I don't have a sidewalk. And I know like we, I, I walked during, even during the winter and in front of the post. Did you just laugh at that? Because you didn't believe me? Okay. I'm kidding. So I, we walk, we walk to the post office and we'll walk down like the post office on, and then walk through the park and walk through Island Park. And the whole thing's ice, right? I just walk slower, right? So I understand, you know? But half the people don't, don't do their sidewalks. I know that. I just walk through the snow, you know? And so I just don't know about, I don't know.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying we should take away the service that we already provide.
Yeah.
I'm saying that we should encourage.
Sure, I agree with that.
Community to step up.
All I'm saying is if you do that whole section of Glen, I'm, I'm, I'm okay. A lot of international, international, this is where I'm coming from. A lot of international students live around there.
Yes.
Okay? Just up to the cabin and those apartments. And they're the ones that I see. And the winter sometimes is the first time that they're encountering snow and ice and they don't know what, you know? And I'm just, but they're, but they're also other students and they're not just international students. A lot of students live over there and they walk. So I am just simply advocating for that particular group. I, you know, so if you take care of that, I'm not gonna bother you anymore.
So Jason, do you have any questions on direction? We would like this.
Just a slow walk back up to the podium.
Yeah, I guess I, I, I'm not sure what I'm hearing as far as whether or not we ought to be chasing down an ordinance that requires folks to be part of the community or if this is more of an advertising thing or.
I guess my question would be, and I, I think, I mean, I'm just kind of quoting what I read in the memo from Aaron. But if we institute a policy where residents need to, like a citywide policy, they need to, we need to clear our sidewalks and that's the responsibility of the individual homeowner. We have a lot of resources currently, so we do a lot of like street plowing already. How can we more, how can we evenly distribute, distribute those resources to make sure that? Because some, some residents would get free plowing, others would have to get out there and do it themselves. How could we go about fairly distributing like the snowplowing capabilities that we have in that case? I'd be interested to hear that.
I would say that if we're going to continue to do the number of miles that we're doing, it's as fairly balanced as you're gonna get probably. Because we, we've tried to focus on those areas that likely get more pedestrian traffic than others. We've, we've built the map so that it is a network that we can navigate without going a bunch of dead ends and, you know, backtracking and all this sort of thing. So I don't, I don't think there's a lot of optimization you could do to that map as far as making it more fair. I mean, that's kind of intrinsic in this when we're only doing around half of the sidewalk. I mean, it's just, I, I don't know how to make that fair. You're gonna have some people that through the luck of the draw, they're, they're, you know, on that map and others aren't. So that's, that's one of the issues with us continuing to do that, unless we were to start to do it all. And again, I don't know that that's a, a great solution. Not that, it may be that we could do that, but I don't think we could do it timely enough. Not that it, it may be that we could do that, but I don't think we could do it timely enough that, that folks are gonna be satisfied with, uh, you know, just having completely clear sidewalks, because we're just not gonna get to it, uh, that quickly. So.
Yeah. Because you don't start the sidewalks until the roads are clear. Yeah.
Yeah, roads and parking.
Could be interesting to, on this map, to put in where are the schools and the hospital, you know, things that must, must be accessible.
Yeah, we've got, yeah, I don't know that it's on that print, but it's, it's in the GIS. Uh, so, yeah. Uh, it's, it's been part of the consideration that, that evolved, that map evolved toward.
So what do you think? Erin.
I wonder if maybe I can reiterate some things and, and try to get us there. Um, hearing support for an ordinance for consideration, but we keep what we do. The only thing that I'm hearing with regard to that though, and Jason, maybe you can help me out with this is I, I've never had to shovel after the crew comes through. I know a certain amount of material is still left. The idea is that it clears most of it, but I think we leave like an inch behind just because that's how the blade and the equipment's designed and everything. Am I correct in that?
Um, yeah, I'm not sure if it's a, an inch, uh, it may be less than that, but yeah, it's not gonna get down to pavement. Again, without insulting, and I, and I agree with Commissioner Bush that, uh, you know, just throwing salt all over the place is not necessarily good solution to this problem. Um, and so, but without doing that, you're, you're not, you're gonna have some, some, some accumulation. I think that's one of the benefits of doing an ordinance is that then you can require, you know, either twelve hours, twenty-four hours time, uh, that it needs to be cleared and you, you got a lot more luck, uh, getting rid of it completely at that point.
Yeah. But, um, a- as far as clearing up after the machine comes through, does that get packed down at all?
You, I would guess so, yeah.
Yeah. So that might even be difficult to match. And just, this is one of the things that I'm thinking of right now is if we can, if we have an ordinance, say ultimately the property owner is responsible, but we continue, we continue to come through with our equipment and we're packing it down, that could actually be somewhat more of a issue.
Yeah, I don't know. It, it would really probably only be the tire tracks that would cause that. And I'm not sure how much, how difficult that would be to.
Gotcha. Okay. So you would just see that as an obstacle then? Okay. I just want to make sure that those two worlds mesh, uh, I suppose. So, okay, those processes will work together.
I think there is some frustration out there amongst those folks that already shovel their drive or shovel their sidewalk and then we come through and, and, and with our machinery. And it, uh, it's not quite as nice as it was when, when we got there really because of the, you know, stuff along the sides and this sort of thing. So.
Okay. Uh, the other issue that I wanted to discuss that we've talked about is the material. Uh, and I can just say personally, I use my, my, um, Paw Safe material that I, I buy in the, in the stores. The only issue I would see with this though, obviously is what would enforcement look like? Obviously, once down on the sidewalks, we wouldn't know one material from another necessarily. So that could be a bit tricky. Um, but to reiterate, an ordinance that would make it the property owner's responsibility, but we keep doing what we do. We solicit community feedback as part of this process. And obviously an ordinance process would have a public hearing component to it as well. We advertise and essentially notice the community on this proposal. And then if the changes are adopted, we would also advertise and notice the community of those changes being adopted. And also utilize that opportunity to highlight, you know, coming together as a community and, you know, making it walkable, navigable, et cetera.
Okay. Mm-hmm. What do y'all think about that?
I'm okay with it.
Yeah. Good summary.
Any questions on your, any other questions on your end? I, I, I think I'm good. Perfect. Okay.
All right. So entertain a motion to adjourn?
I will move.
Second.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. We are adjourned at nine thirteen.